Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November 28th, 2017 Selectman's Meeting. At 6:30, we're going to go into Executive Session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and that the Chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the body and to reconvene in an open session. So, we're going to do that and then we'll come out of Executive Session and I'll go through the agenda items at that time. Have a motion?
Move to go to Executive Session.
Second.
Motion made, seconded for discussion. Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Ginny?
Yes.
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 David Jitz. We'll take the 7:05. Senator Paul Feeney, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much and drew you to the members of the Board, your Town Manager. I am thrilled to be here in your new Town Hall, the new meeting room, Andy Gallin meeting room. I would have killed for a room like this when I was on this Board. But I know it was a lot of hard work by so many people and I saw many of them when I came in tonight. It really is a testament to just, you know, persistence and how many people got involved in this and really saw this to fruition and of course to the people of Foxborough who have supported this and, you know, this is a building we can all be proud of. So, I'm thrilled to be here. I appreciate the opportunity. I was in Town Hall last week speaking with the Town Manager and I said, you know, I'd love to come by the Board and just to say hello, kind of reintroduce myself and let you guys know how to reach me, how to reach my staff. My staff came down tonight as well and I really just wanted to kind of open the lines of communication, let you know, just take a couple of minutes, kind of what I've been doing in the few weeks that I've been up at State House since I got sworn in and then to open it up and see if there's anything that we should be doing in the future. So, I know I've got big shoes to fill. Senator Jim Timmelti served this district very well over the years, the 13 years that he served. To me at least, we're kind of a graduate level education in how to serve the nine communities of this district. Senator Timmelti's done a great job. I hope to continue his legacy in, you know, really getting involved in a lot of local issues, especially here in Foxborough. I did want to take a couple of minutes to introduce my staff that's with me. Drew Phalen is our District Director from Foxborough. Many of you know Drew. She'll be handling kind of constituent casework and dealing with the nine communities and all the local issues. Tino Capobianco is our Communications Director and my scheduler. He's the point person on my personal schedule and he'll be working to kind of push out communications and social media and advisories and press releases. Mike Alant is our Chief of Staff. Mike starts with us on December 11th. He'll oversee the office and he'll be kind of your point of contact for the Town Manager and for the Board and for anything going on in the communities. He'll be the person you can reach out to 24/7. If you can't get me, you can get Mike. If you can't get me on the phone, you can go to 182 North Street and knock on my door. So, and you can reach us at the State House too and this is more for the people at home as well for at our office at 617-722-1222, 722-1222. Same number that Senator Timmelti had, so people that called in should know that. My email goes right to my phone, paul-feeney@masenate.gov. So, those are the ways you can reach us. We are starting office hours. My goal was to do all nine communities in the Bristol Norfolk District before the middle of December to get out and kind of start building relationships and make sure that people know where to find us. We're here in Foxborough, right here in Town Hall this Friday from 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM. So, if there's anybody that needs to come by for any issues at all, they can certainly come by and see me, a member of my staff. And that's really a great opportunity for people to come in and weigh in on legislation that may be pending, tell us their opinions on certain things going on with state government or ask for help. I know sometimes, you know, and Selectman Capola knows this one anyway, a lot of people just reach out that they need help kind of navigating their way through the bureaucracy that is state government. So, we'll be here to do that. We'll advertise that on my Facebook page and in the newspaper as well. In addition to that, I'll be at the Senior Center for a discussion on December 11th, Monday, December 11th at 9:00 AM. I know your Town Manager has frequented that and has discussions with people at that building and we want to make sure that we're available as well to do that. So, December 11th at 9:00 AM, we'll be happy to be there. I got sworn in November 1st and it was kind of drinking from a fire hose for a few days. We were dealing with the healthcare cost containment bill, which is a pretty sweeping piece of legislation. It was a big omnibus bill that had a lot of pieces to it. Those are literally my first two and three days we're taking votes on that. We heard a lot from people in the community, but I just want to make sure that, you know, as these issues come up, we hear from you folks. I believe I heard from the Town Manager and Randy and Deputy Chief Kelleher on a piece that would have affected ambulance receipts in Foxborough throughout the Commonwealth, but Foxborough would have been hit hard on that. And we were able to take that right into the Senate Caucus and get it out of the bill so that we didn't have those issues. So, and again, something that, you know, me stepping into that role wouldn't have known unless we heard from the community. So, that's how it works best for us. We talked a little bit. I sat down with Representative Barrows the other day. Rep Barrows is a great ally for this community and for us. He's really getting us up to speed on a lot of the issues here in Foxborough, Mansfield, Norton and his district. You know, nobody knows the local issues better than Rep Barrows. So, we had a good meeting with him and his staffer to talk about some of the issues that are coming up. We talked a little bit about 140, which I know is going to be a hot button issue with the syrup head study. We're involved in that. Drew from my staff went to the meeting in Mansfield. She'll be at the meeting here in Foxborough. So, we're going to stay up on that, but please reach out if there's anything that comes up that you need our attention on. So, with Jay's help, we'll be kind of taking a deep dive into a lot of those issues, speaking with Randy before we sat down about some of the economic development issues up on Route 1. And we definitely want to ponder and plan on being a hands-on Senator to make sure that we're seeing everything that we need to realize up on Route 1 and that economic growth that belongs up there. So, we want to be a partner in that, but please reach out on anything that comes up. There's a mandated reporter bill, I think, Jim, that you were working on, the House 76 that Representative Barrows filed. That's getting a hearing on December 5th. So, I'll make sure that Linda Walsh reaches out to me on that. So, we'll make sure that we're down there to testify on that bill and on other related bills. So, that's what we got coming up and for an update. I know you got a lot on the agenda tonight. I did want to bring by a resolution from the State Senate. We brought this by last week. Figured you could probably put it up on the wall somewhere. It's like, I know you're starting to put up the pictures and everything. If you want to trade, my State House office has literally nothing on the wall. So, if you have any Foxborough hard work, would love to have it. But I did want to bring this by, Mr. Chairman. Official recognition from the State Senate. We've laid this on the record of the State Senate. You know, we think it's important to congratulate not only you and the work that the leaders have done, but the community itself. This is a building we can all be proud of. So, I'll just take a quick read-through from the State Senate official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to the town of Foxborough in recognition of the official opening of the newly constructed Town Hall. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success. Let this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, signed by Stanley C. Rosenberg, the Senate President, attested to by the Clerk of the Senate, William F. Welch, and offered by Yost Truly State Senator Paul Feeney. So, congratulations on the great building and please, if I leave you with anything, it's just reach out 24/7. You know how to get ahold of me. I had a mentor of mine down in Norton who for years said, "Paul, it's not always about your ability and your inability, it's about your availability and your accessibility." So, you all know that, being the body closest to the people and folks that give up their time. So, anything that I can do to make that easier, anything I can do to help the people of Foxborough, please reach out. Don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator, if I could just add a couple of things. First of all, I just want to say congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Everything you just said is absolutely true. We've already seen him. He was out at our ribbon cutting ceremony, our light switch flickering yesterday at the new solar farm. So, thank you for being there and joining us on that. We do really enjoy having the delegation we can work with and everything I've heard about you is true. So, just to let you know that once a month I meet with Representative Barrows in my office, the first Tuesday of every month, you're welcome to join us at that meeting, the first thing in the morning at 8:30 and before you can head into Boston. If that can happen, it'd be great to have both of you there at the same time so we can bounce off issues that we're hearing and just to get some response and keep you informed of what's going on locally as well.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. Like I said, Jay, you know, you just really worked out to get us up to speed on some of those local issues. Would love to come by and sit down with you. Again, anything that comes up, you know, we'll be here in a moment's notice.
Thank you, Senator.
Just one quick add. I didn't recognize her coming in, but nice choice on you, hey, Drew Phalen?
Yes, absolutely.
I think the last time I saw her, she was volunteering at Founder's Day weekend for the fishing derby for the rec department.
Sure.
I heard you went to college and did phenomenal. So, Foxborough is very proud of your accomplishments. So, well said, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that, Jim.
And on another note, that means you're getting old.
I did a double take when I walked in. What is it, years ago?
Paul, on behalf of the Board, we wish you good luck.
Thank you.
It's good to have another partner up at the State House that we can rely on. So, best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
See you. Good seeing you. See you.
Bye, Paul.
Thanks so much. See you.
Thank you.
Okay. Doc, can we open the public hearing, NPS LLC, MIAA Super Bowls?
Yeah. I'll be opening it up. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 181 and Section 183A, Chapter 136, Section 4, Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter 229, and also stadium rules and regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, November 28th, 2017, beginning at 7:15 PM in the Foxborough Town Hall, 40 South Street, to review the applications submitted by NPS LLC for the 2017 MIAA High School Super Bowls. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Would you like to come up?
Phil Butterfouka, representing Gillette Stadium.
George Bell, Stadium Advisory Committee.
So, this is the 11th year that we would host the MIA Championship, should it be approved tonight. We actually had a breakfast this morning for all 16 teams at the stadium. So, the coaches, the captains, the athletic directors, the cheerleading squads, the band members, the band liaisons and all were all there for really an operational administrative discussion. As you know, we're proposing that we host the two games on Friday night and six games on Saturday. Historically, we've had six games on Saturday. We've never had the Friday night games, but we've never really had an opportunity to host all of the MIA Championships. So, this would be all eight of the MIA Championships statewide would be coming here to Foxborough. So, we're very excited about that opportunity. I know the kids were really excited today to be at the stadium and I know for the cheerleaders, the band members and the football players, it is a thrill to play in the home of the Super Bowl champion. So, we're very excited about it. The games on Friday would be at 5:00 and 7:30. The games on Saturday would start at 9:00 with the last game scheduled for 8:00. We would open the gates on Friday at 4:00, so an hour prior to game time. The ticket office on Friday would open at 9:00 in the morning because it's a normal workday for us, so that would, it would be open all day. And the game, the second game should end around 9:30 on Friday night. There's no tailgating permitted, so after the second game on Friday, really the fans will, they'll either be cheering their team or they'll be consoling their team, but they won't be in the parking lot very long unless they're going up to Patriot Place to enjoy some food after the game. On Saturday, the parking lots officially open at 8:00 AM. The gates open at 8:00 AM as well, ticket office at 8:00 AM. First kick is at 9:00 AM. Ticket prices for both days, whether you come Friday or Saturday, are $17 for adults and $14 for children and senior citizens. Children five years and younger are free and no charge. There is no re-entry to the stadium, so if you leave, you need to purchase another ticket. But if you come for the first game, either day, you can stay as long as you want. So, if you come for the first game on Saturday and you're really a football diehard, you certainly can stay as long as you want. And the weather's supposed to be nice this year, so we're not worried about snow, we're not worried about rain and the cold weathers we've had in the past. So, I think we'll have a very good weekend from that perspective. And the games are televised. The games will be, Craft Sports Productions will televise the games on Saturday. They'll be on NBC Boston Sports and one of the games will be on NECN because there's a conflict with a Celtics game, the 130 game. And then other than that, really, the MIA operates the game. We certainly support them. The crafts are providing the stadiums, you know, rent-free and all, and so we're certainly there to support the MIA, their liaisons and all. They do bring a number of chaperones and people to monitor the students that are there to support their teams in the stands, but we will have our full complement of security and our operational staff there to support the event as well.
From a attendance standpoint, I think you were saying probably 3,000 a game? You anticipate 18?
Yeah, we should, on Saturday, we'll have a flow of about 18,000 total. So, it's, last year we had a few more, the year before we had a few less, so around, right about 18,000. So, the first game of the day is usually the smaller, you know, 2,000 or so, but then the fourth game, we might have 4,000. So, but an average of about 3,000 per game.
And only other comment, no alcohol, be certain.
Correct.
And we met, the advisory committee met and got input from both the fire and police departments. Stadium's going to have a clear bag policy as they have their, really their uniform security coverage for any event inside the stadium.
Correct.
So, you know, we felt confident and recommend for your approval.
Phil, are you just opening one side of the lower bowl?
Correct.
The whole lower bowl?
Nope, we'll open the east side only. No clubs. We'll have like two suites, two or three suites open depending on the parents or the alums of certain players and certain teams, but it is east side only.
Any questions from the Board?
This is the first year all of the games have been played in?
It is. It is the first year.
Must have made those other two leagues happy.
They were ecstatic.
It's good.
It's a great opportunity for them and for us to celebrate football as a whole state.
That's good.
So, you said this is the 11th year?
It is.
11th straight year?
Mm-hmm.
Now, is this a year-to-year contract or you have to, I know you work hard to get it and coordinate everything, but is this guaranteed for the next year or do you have to request it and they have to review it and approve it?
We've been operating on a year-to-year recently. For the first six years, I think it was, or seven years, we had a multiple-year contract.
That's right.
And it's just been more year-to-year. Not that we've had any issues, we just haven't had a multi-year agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Venus is a public hearing. Anybody from the audience have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, Phil.
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. Thanks, Phil. Good luck. Okay. Quarter 8, 7:25. We do the SEMREC, Discussable Intermunicipal Agreement between the Town and SEMREC.
My name's Rob Verdon. I'm the new Executive Director for the Southeast Massachusetts 911 District. Like to offer a partnership or ask for partnership with the district to act as a fiduciary for our recent award of just over $1.5 million from the State 911 Department as outlined in the intergovernmental agreement that you should have a copy of.
So, this is a follow-up to the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago and Rob?
So, you just threw him to the walls, right?
I basically did.
You do it?
I was actually going to, I was actually going to introduce him. That's okay. You can see he's not shy, which is the thing I like about him. So, now, Rob is a highly qualified guy. He's came to us by way of, as Deputy Director of the Chelsea 911 System. He's been in the business for a while and this is obviously a big task for him because he's trying, actually creating a whole new program, a new regional program that includes four towns. He wasn't able to be at our last meeting because of other conflicts, but, and since that time, as I indicated to you, one of the documents that was missing was the Schedule A that was, that he's since produced. He's given you as a draft document. Even though SEMREC Board has not adopted that formally yet, we're scheduled to meet next week to actually take action on that. But the, but the other documents that we produced that were asked for by, I think, Jim had asked for a couple of additional documents, we gave you, we actually gave you a copy of the award letter for the grant as well as the supporting documentation that we presented at the four-town meeting to put SEMREC in place that sort of defined what the cost of the program would be over, setting it up initially and what it would cost going forward. So, we have those as benchmarks, purely strictly as benchmarks, but sort of an indicator as where we are cost-wise. We're not close to those costs yet because the only employee that we have really for the program is Rob and actually a part-time treasurer that the Board has hired since his beginning. We took, we received the grant just a few months ago. We were supposed to receive the grant in July, but it was delayed through a process that the State 911 took because they had many people applying for the money for this particular grant program. We, once we awarded the grant, we'd actually started the recruitment process before the grant was awarded. Rob was able to hit the ground pretty much running when he joined us and, just a couple weeks ago. And so, he's been really fast at work trying to pull this, pull all the pieces of this together. So, he's here tonight to answer any questions you may have that he's even more knowledgeable about this issue than I am and I serve as the Chairman of this committee and, but I am certainly here to help him along in answering those questions that you may have as well. So, that's it.
Open up questions from the Board.
Are we still working off the agreement that we got on November 14th or is there a new?
No, it's the same, it's the same agreement, Chris. So, that was the agreement that you had. We, the only thing that was missing was a couple of detachments and we've since provided you with those details.
Okay. Two questions. First one, the second paragraph where it says, "Whereas the Town has received a grant award from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the support and development of a regional emergency communication center," which is predicated on being a reimbursable grant whereby funds must be, must first be expended before they are reimbursed by the Commonwealth.
Right.
So, does that mean the Town of Foxborough was spending the money and then?
We get reimbursed. We'll get reimbursed. And the reason that was so is because one of the towns had to be, in order to get the grant initially, had to be the lead agency. And so, we were the lead agency in this particular grant. You might recall that the last time we had this joint arrangement was, it's actually with the same towns, I think shy of one other community, was the, was the, was the regional sewer plant. And one of the, in that particular case, Mansfield was the lead community in that grant program. So, one of us had to be the lead.
Is the Town spending $1.5 million and then the State will reimburse us?
No, we're actually, we're actually looking to provide some upfront money, which will get paid for, paid back before the end of the fiscal year. So, what's going to happen is that we, we think that the cost will be somewhere around $100,000, maybe less than that.
Much less.
Much less than that. So, because we'll actually get reimbursed right along. The process of reimbursement takes only a few weeks to get the money back to us. So, it's just a matter of, it's basically seed money that we'll get back. So, we're not going, it's going to cost us anything. It's just, we're just basically front-loading some money to make the process work.
Can you, can you apply for reimbursement as you spend it or you have to?
Correct. Yeah. So, as we encumber and spend the money, once we have paid that, it's eligible for reimbursement.
So, shouldn't something like that, the reimbursement, be part of this agreement that we're supposed to sign?
That's the agreement, the additional intermunicipal agreement is what's that, what's that agreement is for. So, it'll allow us the ability to do that. So, the intermunicipal agreement is between SEMREC and the Town of Foxborough. So, that allows you the ability for us to do that.
Which is what this agreement is?
Yes, that's right.
But it doesn't state in this agreement any of the, how are the towns getting reimbursed? I mean, to me, this agreement doesn't even state the amount of money that the grant is, which if it's a legal binding contract, I would think it should say the grant is $1.5 million.
Well, that's, that's why we attached the grant award.
No, I know, I know all the supporting documents, but if you're signing a legal contract binding thing, it should have the stipulations in the actual agreement.
Ultimately, Chris, the amount is actually going to be significantly higher than that. The grant, we think what we're trying to achieve was well over $5 million.
Correct.
So, we think that amount's going to actually, we're going to actually get additional grants over the next few years to allow us. So, the authority that we're basically allowing is the ability for us to continue to work through this.
And that's just for the startup.
That's right.
Once SEMREC is up and running, SEMREC will be the recipient of the grants going forward.
Exactly. In fact, the next grant will actually be through SEMREC.
Correct. Next fiscal year, we're going to apply as a district. And just to clarify, the contract with the State is actually between the Town and the State, not with SEMREC and the State, which caused the issue and triggered this IGA to be drafted.
So, clarify that one more time. The disagreement is between us and the State, not?
Correct. So, when the grant was applied for, it was applied for as Town of Foxborough, DBA SEMREC before the district was actually stood up and we didn't have a tax ID and everything you need to receive a grant. Shortly after I was brought on board and we said, "Hey, how are we going to spend this money?" It has to be administered through the Town. We would like to form a formal relationship as the Town is a fiduciary to say that this money is to be used for the district instead of as the Town. And the DBA becomes the district by way of my payroll. It needs to come through the Town versus the SEMREC's accountant and accounts. The checks have to come through the Town. It can't be from the district or else they're not reimbursable. So, the contract, which I have a copy of, if you don't, is between the Town and the State.
Yeah, I have it up on the screen. That's all I have for now.
To the Chair, just a budget question. So, thank you for putting the documents together. So, if I'm reading this, if you look at the Foxborough's operating budget for 2017 with the nine employees, salaries and wages, expenses, benefits, evidently there's 911 grants that are coming in. It's $936,000 that Foxborough's paying for the service.
For this current fiscal year, which is our current operating expense?
So, then you back out our share of the four-town agreement of $544,000. That's with the $500,000 grant per year.
Yeah, so I think what's maybe confusing there, Jim, is that those numbers say fiscal 17, we're actually, we're probably not going to be really operational for fiscal 19.
19, okay. So, current numbers of 936 minus the, so it's tracked what we're anticipating when it's up and running. There's a line item in here, so it's 392, but then there's an additional location staff requirement of 300,000. Is that the overtime?
No, the 300,000 was the, don't forget, we still have to have a person that mans the window here at our police station. We talked about having people work, work here around the clock so they can answer the window, because we still, our dispatch center will basically go dark once, once, and, once the, the new Semrec's operation will be up and running. So what happens is that we will maintain a presence in our dispatch center to answer people who walk into the building.
Okay, so the 544,000 goes to the regional.
Right.
The 300,000 stays here that's coming out. So our savings, anticipated savings is 93,000 per year.
Right. Plus, plus the million dollars.
The million dollars for the equipment savings, right. And if that, that grant, how, how long is that grant for? It's a one-time thing, spread out over the years?
Right, so, so we, we applied originally for a $5 million grant. We, we got our first piece of that, which is about 1.5 this year. We'll get another, we think probably another close to 1.5 next year, and maybe another 1.5 or more for year, years three. Maybe more next year, only because we know that we got a lot associated with construction next year of the, the new facility. So I think we'll, we'll probably have a little bit more money into that grant next year, if, if, if we get it from, from the state.
So, if, we received a 1.5 million dollar grant, correct? We're not gonna expend 1.5 million dollars in this, this current fiscal year?
It depends. It, it depends. Maybe Rob speak to that, to that point.
Sure. So the, the performance period of the grant ends June one, I'm sorry, July one. So we really have that window to spend that 1.5, identify and spend that 1.5 million dollars in this year, possibility of a 90-day extension. So there is a strong possibility, and I anticipate spending that 1.5 million dollars from that grant this year, or else it could disappear.
So, so you have to spend the?
It can, it can carry forward. You know, they do, will do a lot to carry it forward. They, they, what they're looking for is a commitment that we'll, that we'll try, they don't want it to hang around.
Right.
So they want us to try and spend it.
Correct.
So when, when do you have to apply for the next round of grants?
We think by, is it March or May of next year?
March it'll open, should close in May. Award should be July, probably more August, September.
So it's, is it feasible that you'll be unfunded for a period of time?
Hopefully, the interim between FY18, FY19, we could extend the FY18 to, to bridge that gap, but there is a, there is a possibility that we could be unfunded.
How's that work? Who's liable for that?
Well, all four towns would be liable to a degree for, but the only, for only the expense that we have at that, at that time, which would be minimal personnel expense. We're not gonna hire the full complement of staff till probably sometime in late 2018, 2018.
Correct. And once we are operational with the staff answering 911 calls, that, that allows us to be eligible for other grants from the State 911 Department, that the towns are individually receiving now, so.
So, for that unfunded, that period of time, that there's a possibility that there'll be no funding, and the, the second round of funding goes to Semrec. Will Semrec reimburse the towns for that, that period of unfunded time period?
Yes, so, in other words, if any, any, any costs associated with Semrec that's reimbursable under the grant, we always have to qualify that, that the answer would be yes. It would go back to, to, to the individual towns. Now, what's, what we have, there are some administrative expenses that aren't, aren't reimbursable, but we anticipate those to be minimal at this point. We somewhere in the realm of about five, six thousand dollars per community.
Correct.
On annual basis.
Any questions?
This draft budget that we have, that's how you're proposing to, to spend down that 1.5?
Correct.
What's the state of the building in Mansfield, where this is gonna be? Is it ready to start doing work, or?
So, we're actually looking at, the, the Mansfield's still occupied, and the, the 1.5 million dollar award versus the 5.5 million dollar award kind of made us take a second look at the way we're actually gonna deploy that money. The original goal was to, to have that one, the 5.5 million dollar award for FY18. We got 1.5 instead. So Mansfield's building is still occupied. Part of that 5.5 was to move the police department out of the building to allow it to be available for construction. The construction that we would be doing, we couldn't afford with 1.5 million dollars, so it kind of protracts that a little bit. We're also looking at another site in Foxborough, the High Rock former AT&amp;T longline site. Part of the $30,000 in, in the proposed budget is to do a structural analysis of that building, which we're very hopeful will be positive. It has a strong possibility to be a much more resilient and more appropriate spot for a critical piece of infrastructure like a 911 center for four towns. If that is confirmed to be structurally sound and feasible, we'd able, we'd be able to be a lot more aggressive in our construction, because there's nobody occupying that facility.
So we don't even know if this facility's going in Mansfield yet? I thought we've decided.
Well, we, there was, we started out with, with the possibility of going to Mansfield because that was the one that was available at the time, but we, we then found out that we could actually have the, the facility in Foxborough was gonna be donated to Semrec for no cost. So, so when that became, that possibility just emerged within the past few months, and actually if you look at that facility, and the state has actually been out here to look at that, they actually think this is a better opportunity for, for us, and it'll be Semrec's facility, not, and it won't belong to any one town. The, the facility in Mansfield actually still, will still belong to Mansfield, whereas this one actually belonged to Semrec.
So if this change of sites just came up, do you have to go back to the other towns and see if that's okay with them?
No, we, well, we've actually conferred with all, all four towns. All four towns are actually, actually are very excited about it, because it, it actually creates a lot less challenges in terms of, you know, moving people out of the building and then doing the renovations. The building itself is actually a hardened facility, a nuclear hardened facility, that is amazing. I mean, it's, it's actually built ideally for this kind of use. It was, it was, it was a communication center for AT&amp;T back in the 60s and 70s, and, and it's, it's basically a concrete structure that you couldn't afford to build today. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty, it's extraordinarily safe and ideally located for, for that kind of situation. What's, what's particularly interesting about the site is that it has perfect line of sight distance to all four towns that, that it's gonna serve, and actually even goes beyond that. So it's, it's actually extraordinary location. We're located on Route One, right next to the, the estate, the state forest there. It's on the top of the hill, and you'll see, if you go by it, you'll see a big, big television, a big.
Antenna.
Antenna up there, and that's where it's located, right there.
So this, is this budget for this, the building near on Route One, or is this budget for Mansfield?
That's to be determined, until we, we do the study, to anal, to do the analysis, and then, and then we'll decide, well, which direction we're gonna go. So we think, we're doing a, doing a $30,000 analysis just to make sure we, we can go in there first. But that building will belong to us.
Semrec.
Semrec, right, being Semrec.
Now, just one more question on the budget. So if you read through it, the, the savings, aside from the equipment savings, is 93,000, but if you're taking the 1.5 million spreading over three years, right, so it's 500,000 each, a year that's in this budget, divided by the four towns, if you take that grant away, then it's actually running in a deficit. Am I reading that right?
No, no, because we'll continue to operate as we normally operate with, with the budget that we have in all four towns until Semrec goes live. All right, so what we're, what we, what we're doing right now is paying for the upfront startup costs of building Semrec, which will, which will reduce the cost significantly to all four towns. And then, there may be some, like I said, some administrative costs to get us to that, to get us over that hump, but we're not, the, the grant that we're looking for will actually pay for the salary of the director, the, the dispatchers, and, and actually some IT specialist's costs as well, that will go into that, including, including the, including the equipment.
So when I'm reading the sheet that says estimated regional dispatch center budget of 544,000.
That's for the regional, that's for the regional center itself. All we provided you was an estimate of our current operating costs.
Okay.
And then, and that's the same thing for all four towns. You have, all four towns were reflected in that, in that.
Okay. Thank you.
So once Semrec is up and running, and there'll be a person at the Foxborough facility, uh, police?
At our dispatch center, right.
Well, what kind of a person is that gonna be? A dispatcher, is it gonna be a volunteer, is it gonna be a policeman, a fireman?
We created a new job description that takes all the ancillary duties that they're currently doing, except for dispatch. So, you know, might be issuing permits, it's, you know, taking, someone comes in and reports an accident, you know, those kind of things. And so they're called, right now, communication coordinators. I don't know if that's gonna be the title, but that's the job description that the four towns, you know, like, we, we surveyed what the ancillary duties, all four towns are gonna be handling those ancillary duties differently, but for Foxborough, we decided this communications coordinator position was what we needed, because those are the duties that are gonna be left behind.
Okay, so is that coordinator gonna be under the police department, Foxborough Police Department?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
These are Foxborough employees.
Can I just go back to the, the two different buildings? Is the Mansfield one totally out?
No, no, it, it, if, if the, if it comes back after an analysis of the, of the proposed Foxborough site, it says that, you know, you can't, you can't go in there for X reasons, and we, and the board meets and says, you know what, this isn't gonna work, or it's gonna be too costly to renovate it, then we'll go back to the Mansfield site. So we've already done some preliminary estimates, and, and we're ready to actually start going to work on, on the, on the Mansfield site if necessary. So the, we have access to the Mansfield site today. We also will have access to the, to the, to the Foxborough site, depending upon whether or not we have.
So if the Foxborough site falls through, there is a place?
Yes.
With this all to go?
Right, either way.
So, so the Foxborough site is on Route One by the state forest?
It is, up and, up and, sits on top of the hill.
Is there a secondary access to that?
There's, there's actually two accesses to it, believe it or not.
Anywhere besides Route One?
Yeah, there's one, there's a couple roads that were, that I think were abandoned, that would have to be, we'd have to do some, some work to them, but they actually could, could provide access to it.
So, I mean, the elephant in the room during game day or concert day, when Route One is somewhat shut down, if someone needs to get in and out of that E-911 area, they'd have to go someplace other than Route One.
Well, the, the 911 operations center, that, that center will have access 24/7. All right, so irrespective of, and, and we've, and all, all the, the public safety personnel talked about that. In the, in the worst-case scenario, where we had to transport a dispatcher to get up there, we would make access available through public safety. So that's, that's not an issue, because we, we contemplate that concern.
Nothing's actually getting physically dispatched out of there, ambulance or?
No, 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 no. Strictly, strictly, strictly dispatches themselves would be, would be, would be doing that, so.
So when will you decide which location?
Should be coming up, well, as soon as we get the study back. It should be, should be fairly soon.
So you're not gonna do anything to either location until you've?
That's correct.
So tonight's the first time we as a board have heard of this second location, right?
Yeah, we just heard about it a couple of weeks ago ourselves, literally. So this is brand new.
Was it a couple of weeks? I mean, I thought you just said a couple of months ago.
No, the, the, I, I actually, the first time I heard about it was about a couple of weeks ago, it was probably about, actually when Rob first started.
Correct.
Well, my, my feeling is we're, we were about to enter into an agreement two weeks ago, proposed, and I had all my sights on Mansfield, so in the future, I think we need to be kept up to speed quicker than, you know, it's coming out tonight.
Well, just, just so you know, I mean, we're, we're literally trying to find out if this is gonna happen. I couldn't even get the, we had to get everybody in the room to make sure that there was kinda, that people were in all supportive of going there, which in and of itself happened about two weeks ago, literally. And then we have to determine, and then Rob, Rob just met with State 911 last week to talk about it, because, to see if they would support going there. So this is brand new, literally brand new.
I think the important thing is, we need to get this agreement signed so we can get reimbursed.
Yeah, no, I'm tracking that, but my, the question on the Mansfield building, I mean, he mentioned part of the money is gonna be spent to relocate the Mansfield police, so is?
That money is, that money's not available in this grant. That was part of the?
Not available in this grant.
That was part of the larger grant.
So when are they ready to move out of there?
Well, not till 2019.
Correct, when their new facilities?
So if we go to the Mansfield facility, are we gonna be able to spend 1.5 million dollars?
Yeah, we'd be limited to external repairs, roof, limited reinforcement of the structure, but we'd be, you know, stymied a lot by just those people on it. Versus the, the High Rock, it lends itself to being more desirable, because it's empty, it's ready to go. We could, if we need to put a roof on it, there's no concerns of interrupting dispatch operations or normal office hours. If we need to pave a road, there's nothing stopping us, as, as far as that goes. It's, it's a big concrete box that's ready to be turned into a 911 center. We're just doing our due diligence to make sure that it's structurally sound, and there's no hidden gotchas that are gonna, you know, cost a ton of money to mitigate, which also lends itself just to, you know, it, we're building a, a massive 911 center, combining the, putting all your eggs in one basket, so to speak. I think it's a good practice to compare two buildings against each other and say, hey, this is the best one, we're, we're sure of it, and we could do this, and it's safe to do, so.
We didn't really have an option up until, up until literally a few weeks ago.
Is this, is the Route One building the same size, or similar in size to?
It's, it's larger.
It's actually larger, yeah.
So we have a room to expand, or we, we don't, we won't have any concerns about space confinement.
Which, which gives us options to consider for the future, whether we could use that the State, and State might even consider using that as a training center, or we could actually expand it and have additional communities join us, and create, and create a bigger regional center.
If the Foxborough site works out, could you get in there sooner?
Absolutely. So theoretically, we could start construction tomorrow, absent of any legal agreements and, you know, our engineering studies and bid processes and stuff, but we could, we could turn the key tomorrow and start working there.
Did you say the state owns that property right now?
No, it's privately owned by a company called American Tower, and American Tower just has no interest in the facility whatsoever, and they, they'd be gifting it to, to Semrec. And they, they also would provide us space in the tower as well to, to locate our equipment on the tower. They still have an, an interest in the tower, because they use it, they do rent space in the tower as it is.
And they need access to maintain the tower?
Right.
And utilities, water, sewer, gas, all the communications, on a scale of one to 10, is there anything there?
It's, it's all there, that's part of the studies to verify that it's still.
It's usable.
And how old is that building?
It was built in 19, late 60s, and then it was added to in the 70s. So, it is built to absolutely insane standards. It's a, the concrete, it's designed to take a nuclear blast within a few miles. It was Cold War era, it was critical infrastructure. Basically, the design, the building was designed to carry all long-distance telephone, television signal across the country. These, these buildings are built across the country as hardened facilities, anticipating being attacked, having a nuclear attack and surviving that. The, the concrete used to pour the building, looks like it was poured yesterday. It is a 10,000 PSI concrete versus the Tobin Bridge, which is made out of 65 to 7,500 PSI concrete. It cost, we had an estimate, it cost over 200 million dollars to build today. So, it is a purpose-built for this kind of, this kind of work.
So, it's probably, I hit, just gotta ask, so when you're cutting windows and handicapped accessibility in bathrooms, is it gonna cost 100 times more than it would in a traditional constructed building?
Well, there are bathrooms in it already, actually.
Yeah, the architect, we haven't, have, we haven't got the report back, but the architect was not concerned about that at all.
I mean, would it come under those state, those requirements, handicapped accessibility and all that?
It's all, it's all level, for the most part, yeah.
Oh, it's, it's one level, it'd be easy to accommodate those standards.
The irony is, it's a communication center that will have absolutely no cell service inside.
That is probably true.
You'll have to step outside to call an assault phone.
Okay. Any other questions? No. I have a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement.
Is there, is there gonna be a public comment on this?
It's not a public hearing, it's.
Because the one last time wasn't continued. I just had some, I'll bring it up another way.
No, you, well, you, you can have your say.
Here, come up to the mic, Phil.
All right, my name's Richard Parker, I live at 79 West Street, I've been a resident for 30 years, I've been before here before. In regards to the non-transparency of the regional dispatch, and the last meeting you had two weeks ago really bothered me, where you were given a piece of paper that was blank. No one, it appeared no one on the board knew that the town of Foxborough received the grant. Everybody thought that Semrec received the grant. Everything in the paper said that Semrec received the grant, but the town of Foxborough did. So now the town of Foxborough has to re, pay the money out for all four towns to get the money back. So that, that's the first thing. Another concern that I had was, I believe, a member of the board asked Mr. Keegan why the agenda was amended so late for the Semrec. And I believe he stated because he was waiting for a vote from the Semrec Board to approve the intermunicipal agreement. Well, that meeting took place in Easton at 1:00 on the 13th. That amended agenda was stamped by the town clerk at 11:37 on the 13th, and it was posted That amended agenda was stamped by the town clerk at 11:37 on the 13th, and it was posted on the website at 12:01 on the 13th. The meeting didn't happen till after 1:00. So, we're, we're talking about transparency and I, I just don't understand how we, you, we can sit and listen and the times don't add up. If it's amended, if it's gonna be approved by the Semerick Board at their meeting at 1:00 on the 13th, how can you already have the agenda posted on the website at noontime?
Chairman, I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer that. The, 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 the meeting was actually scheduled for, for Thursday prior to that.
That's correct.
And, and the meeting had to be postponed because one of the board, one of the committees did not post it properly.
Right.
So, we moved the meeting to that Monday to be, to be acted on. Now, if in fact the board did not act to approve it that afternoon, I would've said you can't act on it because the board didn't approve it. So, it was that simple. It, it, and the fact is that it, it, it was entirely, um, you know, clear as to how the process was, and I explained that to the board the last meeting, Richard.
So, why wouldn't you wait until 2:00 to post it on the town website after the meeting?
Because I was actually in Easton at that time, so I was on my way back from Easton after that meeting.
Okay, 3:00, Town Hall's till 4, Town Hall's at 4:00. All this was done before the meeting even took place.
It, it, it doesn't matter, is what I'm, what I'm suggesting to you, because if the board didn't approve it, like, all I had to say, the meeting, the board didn't approve it. I would've, I would've pulled the, I would've pulled the item from the agenda.
It's just that, the board didn't know that the town of Foxborough got the grant. The reaction from the board at the, at the last meeting threw me for a loop, but, uh, you know, I had, like I told you before, I had one of the selectmen tell me it was the first he heard about regional dispatch in an email.
All four, all five members were at the meeting when that was gonna approve, so that's absolutely-
Not that one, this was a while ago.
Alright.
Um, so, I, I just, it just bothers me that, as, as far as I'm concerned, it hasn't been a transparent process. I've been in town for 30 years, and this has been the most non-transparent issue that I have seen in my 30 years in town.
Well, you're also a dispatcher, correct?
Yes, I am, and I've been a dispatcher for-
And we know, and we know why you're, you're, you're saying that.
I've been a dispatcher for 20 years, I've been a resident for over 30 years.
Right.
So, I've been a resident a lot longer.
No more motivations here, Richard.
Richard, we even impact bargaining with the unions that it belongs to.
I'm not, okay, I am not here as a town employee, I am here as a resident, I've been a resident for 30 years. Why you always have to bring in my employment, I'm here as a resident, a concern as a resident. Uh, those are my, that's what I just wanna understand, I don't understand how you can say that you're waiting for the Semerick Board to vote on it and then have it posted before it even happens.
I explained that.
I, I understand that, but that's all I'm saying, is I, I just don't understand, and there's been many other instances like this that have happened. The whole process, it went on for three years, there was a Foxborough Selectman's meeting with the other towns in Mansfield, and then there was a meeting in Foxborough that lasted an hour and a half, done, voted on. I'm still waiting for my copy of the feasibility study that I asked for a year and a half, asked three times for it. Chief Selon sat in the chair next to me at that meeting and said, I will get you a copy of that feasibility study. I still don't have it. Would, would, would you kinda question the transparency if that happened to you? Has anybody seen the feasibility study? Anybody on the board? No one ever answers me, so I, I would assume that you haven't seen one. Mr. Feldman, Mr. Elfman, have you seen one?
I'm not looking for it.
Mr. Mitchell?
Um, I've seen so many different things, I couldn't tell you right now if I've seen it.
Feasibility study for the regional dispatch center?
I, like I said, I've seen so many different documents on that and everything.
Don't recall seeing one.
Mr. DeVellis?
We can play the quiz game, let me state this.
How do I get a copy of it?
Excuse me, excuse me, I went to the, uh, meeting in Mansfield.
Mm-hmm.
I went to this meeting, I've had numerous emails, I've reached out to the town manager, every question that I have had, asked, I've had answered, up until the last meeting where I was, wanted some more budget, and they gave us lots of budget information, and I'm, I'm satisfied. I've spoken to a lot of people in the police, in the fire, in the residents, and there are mixed reactions, but I gotta say, the process, and, and let me step back a little bit, it's not uncommon to put something on the agenda in anticipation of a vote. We do it all the time, because we, we only meet every two weeks. So, if we miss, uh, a, a posting of something, we gotta wait two weeks.
Okay.
I can, I can name dozens of times that we've put stuff on the agenda and the anticipated action hasn't happened and we've had to pull it. So, the difference between 1:00 and 2:00 and 3:00 may be semantics, it, it may not be, I don't know. I, I can, I, I've looked at the PowerPoints, I've looked at every document that's come, I'm satisfied.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
I think, I think this entire board is satisfied, and we all voted to support it, along with the other communities. I think this, this item here is to make sure that the town of Foxborough gets reimbursed for all the money.
So, we've put the money out and then we get paid back.
That's right.
So, my, my only question right now is, how do I get a copy of the feasibility study for the Semerick?
You can request it from me, or you can get it from, get it from Rob.
I already have to submit a Freedom of Information question.
Okay, well, Chief Selon sat in the chair next to me and said he'd get it for me.
I wasn't present when you said that, so.
Bill, do you, do you have the study?
I, I can get it for him, I'm sure.
I mean, we, we can go through the Freedom of Information, but if he's asking for it, just get him the study and-
Yeah, that's fine.
Someone can get that for me?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
A motion to approve?
A move to approve the, uh, intermunicipal agreement between the town and Semerick.
Second.
Motion made, seconded for discussion, see none, all is in favor?
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
This isn't normally the first meeting how we handle these things with a new guy. So, alright, thanks, Rob.
Okay, um, just a Selectman's update, I've been out of town all weekend, I hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. Um, I know there were some events over the weekend, um, I know turkeys were delivered on, on Saturday and, the rec department had the annual tree lighting.
Anybody there?
Yep, you nailed it. Those two things happened.
But I wasn't physically there, so.
Tree lighting was nice, and then everyone, uh, was invited back for a free movie at, at the Orphan, so it was like 350 or so people went there. I tell you, it was nice to see people walking, crossing streets, you know, interacting, and it was, it was a nice weekend.
Good job, Jim, to everybody in your team on the, the turkeys and Thanksgiving Day.
Yeah, I was actually traveling that Saturday, so, uh, Linda Walsh, Rachel Calibris, a bunch of people, J.C.'s, delivered them, and a lot of families did it, so it was, um, you know, it was good, and it was a good showing at the, um, at the football game, a lot of the veterans came.
I had a little kid come to my house for my son Patrick and said-
Oh, you were on the list, yeah.
Yeah, he goes, you Patrick Mitchell? I said, no, he's smarter than I am. But no, it was good, the, the cards are nice and the whole gesture is, is a good gesture.
Good group.
Yeah, I know Parker delivered, uh, a bunch of turkeys, he got permission from the Army to wear his, uh, his ACU, so, he was, uh, he was all excited about giving something back, so it was good, it was good.
Do you have anything else? Bill?
Just a, a couple of things, we have a town meeting on, coming up on Monday night at the high school, um, beginning at 7:30 PM. And, um, and it's not a very controversial warrant, so we do, we do want people to know about it and make sure we really would like people to come, um, because, um, we, with the, the business of the town needs to get done and, 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 and finished, so, uh, the town meeting is a legislative body, you know, legislative, um, arm of the community, so we need to have, uh, participation at that meeting. If, uh, all goes well, it shouldn't be a long meeting, but we, hopefully we'll get everything done, um, in a timely, uh, and orderly way. There were a couple, um, I can, I can tell you that the debate process with the, with the AdCom was, was actually very healthy and it was good, it was, and fully vetted, um, in some ways, um, it was, I, I thought that the discussion was, you know, you know, afforded us the opportunity to really look at some things differently, and it actually pulled a couple of things back, uh, for further consideration at the annual instead of the special, so, um, I thought it was a very good process in that regard. Hope everybody had a great holiday, um, it was a nice few days to take off and relax and spend it with the family, and it's, and that's exactly what we hope we all did, so, that's all I have, thank you.
Mayor Beth?
Yep, um, just wanted to say that, uh, today we did get the final motions all approved by town council for town meeting, we'll be sending those out to you. The, um, today was an exciting day, we kicked off our customer service program for town, um, employees. We expect to roll it out over the next couple of months, um, we will be doing surveys at every department, little cards asking, how is your service, and it's gonna be in all, not just town hall, all town departments, and, um, we felt that if we're gonna be surveying the public in, say, January, we wanted to at least afford the employees a training to, uh, help shine their skills a little. So, we had two sessions today, we had 37 people attend, um, it was great, it was about customer service excellence, and the reviews, people really enjoyed it, um, we are running two more sessions in January, the speaker isn't, wasn't available in December, but we'll also videotape those for employees who work shift work and can't, um, get to the training. We, Personnel Board, I just met with them at 5:30 tonight, uh, we met to discuss the, um, training of town employees for child sexual abuse and a policy to support that as well. Um, they wanna support the Warren article that was approved at last year's town meeting, they're interested to hear how the legislation pans out, and, um, we're looking for sample policy language. Unfortunately, our attorney was unable to attend tonight's meeting, he had a back injury, so, um, we proceeded with what we could do and, um, made plans for looking at a policy that supports, um, training of employees, um, for the child sexual abuse issue. Um, we also ha, are now at the finalist stage for our executive assistant position, um, we interviewed, we had, uh, about 200 applicants, we phone interviewed and brought in six people, we phone interviewed about 12, brought in six people. I think we're down to a finalist, and, um, same thing with building commissioner, we are, we just interviewed, uh, three finalists for that position, so we're getting close to some of these key positions. And last week, we made offers to five firefighter paramedics, um, and we're working through reserve police officers right now. I think, uh, there's about 13 that, um, just had interviews, so, it's been a busy time on the training and hiring front, uh, as well as town meeting and, uh, collective bargaining. A lot of back and forth on the steelworker contract, the union did ratify it, you folks approved it, AdCom approved it, so that will be on town meeting, um, floor, and we hope that all of the steelworkers that are in the contract will come out and support that.
Just go ahead, I'm sorry.
The switch.
I'm sorry?
Oh, the switch.
Thank you, how could I forget? Thank you, so, um, yesterday we, we cut the ribbon on the new, um, on the new solar fields, uh, project, which has been, and, uh, has been discussed and has been, been in, in works for the past, um, since 2013, from what, from what I recall. Uh, there were different iterations of it, um, in, in the sense that the first iteration was actually, um, bid so that Sun Edison was, was the high, was the low bidder on that process, and they were actually under, getting ready to start the construction phase when they went, actually went bankrupt. Um, they then, um, the company then, uh, the assets of, of the, of the company, with, with the assets of the project then went to, um, the power, um, power, uh, what was it, Power Resources, I believe it was, Power Options. Power Options Company, which then re, uh, rebid the, rebid the project to a number of different entities, and NIG was the successful bidder in that project. They took over in 2016 and then put the, put together all the, the pieces of that project, and we were, we were actually, um, under construction in, uh, April of 2017, earlier this year. Project was essentially completed about two months ago, about two weeks ago, uh, and fully, uh, on both sides. It was, one project was actually done sooner, uh, was done actually by the end of September, this one and the other one was done, uh, closer to the, um, end of, uh, end of October. So, we've had, uh, so we're up and running right now, and the NIG came out and did a formal, uh, ribbon cutting, which in their, in their, in their way and shape and form is, is a flick of a switch, a very large switch, as a matter of fact. Um, I know that Selectman DeVellis and Selectman Coppola were, were there in attendance at that, at that, uh, event yesterday afternoon, which I appreciate. Senator, um, the new, our new senator, uh, was, it was in attendance as well. And so, it was a, it was a great, uh, it was a great opportunity for us to share, which is gonna be a great asset for the community over, over the next 20 years. That project alone will, will generate about 4.2, 4.2 megawatts of power, uh, over, over, uh, as, as that level of capacity, which will reduce our dependency on fossil fuel and use of energy for electricity and payment of electricity by one-third for the, for all the town's facilities. Um, it'll, it'll be, it'll generate about 7.2 million dollars in, in value to the community over the next 20 years. So, we're very excited about that option, I, I wanted to, about the ability to, to actually get that project underway. Um, I wanna thank Bob Cutler and, and, and Roger Hill, who are the, the two primary architects behind that project, um, in getting it started. Um, obviously, um, we had, uh, we had a number of special advisors, including Randy Scarlands, and, as well as, uh, Special Counsel State Mados, uh, Mados rather, from, uh, who worked with us on putting the documents together for this, this project. It was, uh, a long time coming, but, uh, I think well worth the wait. And, um, again, reducing our fossil fuel over, over the next 20 years at, at minimum is, is a big plus for all of us, as well as the fact that it, it provides a significant, uh, financial resource to the community. So, thank you for reminding me to, to bring that forward, but it was, uh, it was a good day for Foxborough. Thank you.
Just, just one more, um, tomorrow night, it's an important meeting, the, um, corridor study that's been going on.
Yes, thank you.
It's gonna be at Boyd and Library at 7?
Thursday.
Thursday night, Tuesday night.
Yeah, Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday night.
Tonight's Tuesday, so, uh, Thursday night.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, the corridor study, most people think of as that area, the old Bradley's, the Charter School, Walnut Street. Um, they presented in front of Mansfield, so I'm curious to see what they've come up with.
And, and that, that corridor study actually extends from the, from the Common all the way down into, into Mansfield.
Oh, 'cause all the way to the Common?
Was at the Common, yeah, so, uh, that's, they're actually able to extend that project all the way through there, so, um, obviously, the, 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 the key areas of concern are Walnut Street, uh, Central, the Central Street intersection, uh, those really hit the high points in terms of the public comment that we saw on this project throughout the, the presentations.
Fish, Fisher Street as well.
And Fisher Street as well, that's right, so, those are the key points of concern that everybody wants to take a look at and see what's gonna be recommended for those, those particular locations. So, it's, it's a long, long process, a long, but a, but a very necessary study because it extends all the way into Norton, and, um, it's probably one of the longest studies of its, in, in terms of length of study as, as, that I've seen in quite some time. Actually spanned two separate planning, uh, planning, regional planning authorities, um, uh, being MAPC for Foxborough and, and Serpent, who actually took the lead in the project, uh, for conducting the analysis. So, um, looking forward to those results.
Do you have a update on the Roundabout?
The Roundabout, um, is, we, we've been informed that, um, the, we're waiting for the bid results for the project, um, so, so we can, there were still some last-minute changes that the state district has, has been performing on the plans themselves. We're trying to get the project out to bid, we've been trying to get that out for quite some time. Uh, once it gets bid, um, we're informed that, that both, that the two state agencies will help fo, close the gap in terms of the funding. The funding difference, um, in this case was that this, that the district office, district higher offices has required that there'd be full-depth reconstruction around the project, which was not something that was anticipated from the beginning of the project, was something that was sort of included later on in the, in the analysis, in the, in the design. So, uh, that was a bit of a surprise to everyone, so that, that being the case, uh, we raised that concern with this, with the state, and the state has indicated they will, they will help support closing that gap. We're hoping that the project will be on the construction by the spring.
Since we have you here, another question?
I'm here.
Uh, the gravity sewer line along Centennial Market up to the fire station.
Yep.
Anticipated-
We're, we're hoping that'll be, that'll be live, um, um, before, um, probably in the next few weeks. Uh, it's, it's in pretty good shape, they're moving right along, they wanna get it, they wanna get it buttoned up before, before the snow flies, obviously, but they, uh, it, it was pretty messy out there with, with all the construction going on, but they, they're, they're moving right along. They ran into a little bit of rock, uh, which delayed them a little bit, but they, they've gotten through that already, and now they're, they're moving right through it, so, and that was part of the budget, so it's not, it didn't blow the budget. So, that was, that was a good sign. I'm gonna get an update on that tomorrow morning though, so that was on, tied on my list of considerations.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, Actionator?
Yep. Uh, move to approve a, uh, move to approve seven one-day wine and malt beverage license applications for the Ophium Theater for 12/1/17 Rocky Horror Picture Show, 1:00 PM to 1:00 AM. 12/2/17 Remax Customer Service Appreciation, uh, 101 Dalmatians, 9:30 to 12. 12/22/17 Michael Pettit, 'Tis the Season Comedy Night, 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM. 12/23/17 Perry Family Reunion, it's a private event from 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM. 12/29/17 Maureen Hancock, Postcards from Heaven, uh, 5:00 PM to 11:30 PM. On 12/30/17 Dave Tesler's All-Star Band of Stars, 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM. And, uh, 12/31/17 J.J. Jones' New Year's Eve Comedy Special, 7:00 PM to 1:00 AM.
Second with a lot of questions.
Okay.
Uh, motion made, seconded?
As I say, for the record, I-
As I say, for the record, if there's going to be discussion, I'll leave because I'm on the board of directors.
I need, yeah, I mean.
You don't have to leave.
Usually I do. If there's discussion.
I definitely have some discussion. So if you want to stay, I'm fine. Nothing major, but.
Yeah. I mean, if, if it's okay with the board, I, for full disclosure, I'm the president of the board of directors. Absolutely no financial interest in this whatsoever, so if you want to, if it's okay with you guys.
I'm totally fine. Couple of things. I thought the last time Bob was here, he said he'd never be in front of us again for one-day licenses.
Yeah. I bumped into him a few weeks ago. He said the, the application is very long and tedious. And timing wise, he asked if it was, what was his best course? And I said, get them in. Just get them in.
So Bob, if you're watching, you broke your promise.
I did tell him that.
There's another important point to that, though, is that he's probably better off to do that until the end of the year anyways.
Exactly.
Because if you apply for a license now, you're going to pay for the whole year. So he's probably better off to wait till, till apply after January 1st.
Couple of questions on the individual aspects of these events. Why does somebody need a liquor license to watch 101 Dalmatians at 9:30 in the morning?
That's a good question.
The other one, I mean, a private family reunion from 3:00 in the afternoon till midnight?
Well, you couldn't, you couldn't grant a liquor license between 9:30 and 11:00 anyways.
No. So that one is, and I don't even know why you would request one anyways.
Mimosa's and Bloody Marys.
For 101 Dalmatians?
After 11:00.
Just throwing it out there, but.
So with the, going to the family reunion one, what is the requirement for a venue like that where you're serving alcohol? Do they need a police detail? If it's over a certain amount of people or?
Only a certain amount of people.
Is it worth calling Bob down here to discuss this? He's just down the street.
Well, the, I don't know what the board wants to do, but those two like totally jumped out at me. You know, 9:30 in the morning for 101 Dalmatians for an alcohol license seems absurd to me. Maybe there's a reason. I don't know.
We can't, we can't, we can't grant it for 9:30 anyway.
Yeah. So that one's out. The other one is just my, my concern of having a private event. And I'm not trying to dictate what any business can or can't do, but I want to know the, what are the requirements for police detail if you're, have a family reunion for nine hours and you're serving alcohol?
Would depend on, on the size of the crowd, obviously. It's, it's beer and wine only, so there's no hot alcohol.
Those are only my.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't see any difference between the customer service appreciation and a family reunion.
Well, the customer appreciation one, that's the 101 Dalmatians.
I'm just going to send the audience.
Well, that's the 9:30 one. That's a move to anyway.
Well, yeah. And I mean, if, if somebody's going to be requesting this many one-days with the, the different strange hour requirements, I wish Bob had come, but.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have any problem with him, other than the 9:30 one.
And legally, you're not allowed to.
Right.
Alcohol till 9:30.
Right. And even though we grant the license, he's still, he's still beholden to the, to the regulations.
And there's been no indication that he's violating any of that.
No, and I'm, I'm not questioning that at all.
Fair enough.
I mean, I'm, no, I'm not. I'm not.
But I, I would, I would agree with that. I think the, the 9:30 to 12 is one we should just take off the list, that you don't think you can, we can do that.
So can we remove that one without me reading the whole thing again? Or should I read it all?
You can just, you can do it minus.
You can amend, amend your motion and take out the, the 9:30 to 12, 101 Dalmatians.
Okay. So I'll amend my motion to take out the 12/2/17 Remax Customer Service Appreciation, 101 Dalmatians, 9:30 AM to 12:00 PM, to remove that from my initial approval.
Second.
Okay. Amended motion to be made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Recused? One. Did I miss anything?
Something about dogs and alcohol.
Mimosa's with 101 Dalmatians.
Move to approve the 11/14/17 Board of Selectmen's Minutes.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the Santa on the Common event on 12/2/17 for the J.C.'s from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve a one-day auctioneer's license on 12/2/17 at the Orpheum Theater for the Norton Embracing Educational Development, Inc.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion?
Do they need, do they need a liquor license?
This is, this is a first for me. I, I didn't know, we gave out auctioneer's licenses?
Yep. All is in favor?
Aye.
Accused myself.
Move to approve the gift donation in the amount of $200 to the Council on Aging for programs and services from Mr. and Mrs. Timothy Hilbert.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $50 to the Council on Aging in memory of Jerry Norwood from Joan Galavan.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Well, before you, before you do that, I know that Rob is here. I just want, I just, I want to give him a formal opportunity to introduce himself to the board.
Well, now that he tossed it.
No, 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 no. Sorry, Bill. First impressions are everything.
I know.
You blew it.
You blew it.
So, Rob, I'm just saying a few words and telling people about your, tell the board about your, your background. So I apologize for that.
Thanks for having me back. Well, thank you again for having me. I'm truly excited to join the four towns as the director of the 911 operation. This is truly a, to steal the assistant town manager's term, a white paper project. I've never seen such cooperation between four towns and eight chiefs, ever. And I think the state recognizes that as well, as well. I come from the city of Chelsea. I was the deputy director of emergency management, which incorporated 911 operations. We were combined center of one of the busiest in the state, 16th busiest out of almost 300 PSAPs and the first by per population. Before that, I worked for the Department of Defense. And prior to that, I was active duty with the United States Coast Guard. Prior to that, I was a paramedic and firefighter. So this is really in my blood, come with a technical background that I think will be useful in, in getting this project off the ground. It is a truly complicated project that's going to, it's going to take a lot of teamwork between the towns, not just from what's been done, but in the future. And I look forward to working with you, the other boards of selectmen, and the police and fire chiefs. So thanks for having me again.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So, so Rob has already obviously gotten his feet wet. He's, he's, he's taken up some office space in here temporarily with us. He's, he's a great guy to have around. He's really knowledgeable in so many different areas so that, you know, we, we involve him in a lot of different discussions. But, but the thing is that, you know, all of us are feeling our way around as board members too, because the, the four town managers sort of look at each other like, like deer in headlights sometimes when we deal with some of the issues that come up. And Rob is actually pretty knowledgeable in these things, so he's, he's able to really guide us through that, that process. So we're really, really grateful for, for him to, look, 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 the wind just blew in.
Don't the locks on these doors work?
So, so we're really grateful to have him. I'm really pleased he's joined us and happy, happy to have him around.
Rob, did you say you came, your last job, Chelsea?
Chelsea.
Chelsea. And that's the busiest center?
Per popular, per person, correct. 16th in the state.
16th in the state. Okay. And it's just one town? It's not a regional?
One town, correct.
City, city, yeah.
Correct.
Can I just ask a procedural question?
Sure.
All right. So we have Semerakistan Route 1. And we have someone who runs into the Foxborough Police Department.
Mm-hmm.
And says, oh, my God, something's happening down the street. So who dispatches the police officer at that point?
So a situation like that, it'd be similar to any other situation where somebody runs to the town hall expecting help or a hospital. The, the person, and from what I gather, Foxborough Police is anticipating in staffing the desk 24/7 after Semerak is established. What would happen is that they would essentially call 911 or call a business line at the Semerak Dispatch Center, and they would in turn dispatch an officer. Unless there's an officer in the, in the facility and it was strictly a police matter, it would just be like a pass-through, really.
It's, it's, it's practical, practicality comes into play, obviously, but, but generally speaking, they like the calls to go through the center because then, then it tracks every single call that goes out.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. I mean, I'm assuming the person at the desk is going to have radio contact with Semerak, and that would certainly hasten the process.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I was just wondering.
It's a good question, because actually, we asked it ourselves. I mean, how would this work? And that's pretty much the answer.
While we have you here, another question?
Sure.
If you don't mind. So the anomaly of the stadium in, I want to say Tweeter, but it's not.
Comcast, Infinity Center.
Not even Comcast. Infinity Center. Such huge events under one umbrella, either simultaneously or separately. Are you, how do you prepare for something like that?
So.
Staffing and?
Right. So we, we're building the center, the staff model with those calls already included. And a lot of those, this is tremendous surge from both venues on the 911 system. Most of them are wireless calls. And we're anticipating as Semerak, when it stood up to take wireless calls directly versus going to a wireless center, state police or another wireless center of state. So during those events, I would certainly anticipate, and this is built into the preliminary staffing model, to put another person on duty to kind of mitigate that surge.
Okay. And one last question to, to put people's minds at ease. Everyone knows where Foxborough's police station is. They know the numbers by heart, 543. Calling a dispatcher from another town or who knows? How do you, how do you anticipate that the people are going to be comfortable with that? Is there any PR for that? Or is it just you jump in and?
As far as actually.
They don't know the difference?
Calling for service?
Yeah. I think that's the budget and numbers aside, and then bringing different towns aside. But the person that doesn't have a cell phone, that picks up their home phone because they're elderly and calls the Foxborough Police, how is that service going to be affected? Or is it, or how do you answer that?
So that, the situation's, it's the same answer for today as it is when Semerak's established. We need to have a strong public campaign that 911 is the number to call. Seven-digit numbers are not appropriate for emergency services. Just like today, if you call Foxborough Firehouse, Foxborough Firehouse is not a PSAP. So it would be the same process where it would have to be transferred or relayed to the PSAP, which is in Foxborough Police today, and then dispatched for service. When you call 911, there's, there's a lot of technology you kind of drag with you. This location data that we pulled, there's a name, it's called Annie Alley Automatic Number Identification, which is a, pretty much an enhanced caller ID, and automatic location data, which is a geotagged set of data that comes with your number. If it's a cell phone, you get GPS data. So we can actually see within the new system 90 feet where you, where you are. And then requery it. So if you're moving down Route 1, we could actually watch you move down Route 1 as we're on the phone with you. And that data is tremendous in vectoring and response assets to help. So to answer your question, if they call Foxborough Fire today versus when Semerak's established, it'd be the same process where the firefighters know to either take the information and call dispatch or just to forward it.
You're good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Hey, Bob.
You here for citizen's input?
The birds are tweeting. They said, I can hear service.
How do we handle this? We already voted on it.
We just have a question.
Yeah.
Here we go again.
Not that, I mean, we already gave it to you.
Yeah, we already voted on it.
Very much appreciate that.
Yeah, the only question was.
Why do you want a liquor license for 101 Dalmatians at Disney?
At 9:30 in the morning?
9:30 to 12.
So the Orpheum Theater in Foxborough, we are blessed with a lot of community support, and the bookings have been tremendously heavier than even I had anticipated. You know me, I'm an enthusiastic guy. So on the day of Saturday, which is the second, at 10 o'clock in the morning, I have a private party, the theater's being rented out for a private showing of Polar Express by Remax, the Gil campus agency, to share with their clients. And there is the possibility that we'll be doing mimosa's for some of the adults. The 101 Dalmatians is a parent one. I rather doubt that anybody would be purchasing anything, but it's for the entire day because that evening, I have the Boston premiere of the Lionsgate 2017 release of Saving Christmas. And we have two showings of that. The 5:30 one is sold out, and there's an 8 o'clock showing. And that's a major fundraiser for Norton education, for need down Norton, they supply teacher supplies. So that's a very exciting event. So it's for the entire day, three different events. I don't know if the 101 Dalmatians, which is a Taylor PTO production, is going to have a lot of sales, probably not. But rather than lug it all up and take it off-site for a license and then bring it back onsite, I just want it to be all encompassing. So we did not approve the 9:30 to 12 101 Dalmatians because you can't serve prior to 11:00 AM.
You have it listed as Remax 101 Dalmatians.
Right. Remax and then 101 Dalmatians. So. We approved everything else except that one. Okay.
So can we approve that? I mean, we kind of proved the, did we prove just, did you have just one application for the whole day for three different?
Right. Listed different things on there, yeah.
But did we have three separate applications or just one?
I think it was just one application.
It's a, it's a one-day application, sets for the whole day.
Okay. But you, but we can't give you the liquor license for 9:30 in the morning, but we can give you the license.
Right. We took that one off. We gave them everything else. We approved everything else.
For that, but he's got other things during the day.
Therein lies the problem with you not being here, Bob. And, and that's the confusion of the board, because now that I'm rereading it, as you're explaining it, you know, it reads 12/2/17 Remax Customer Service Appreciation. Now I see the colon, 101 Dalmatians, comma, and it says from 9:30 AM to 12:00 PM. So we, I guess we see, although it doesn't have, what was the night one you were going to do on 12?
Saving Christmas.
There's two showings of Saving Christmas. So that goes up to midnight?
To midnight, yes.
Okay. So we didn't, we pulled the whole thing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so now we, but we.
Well, you pulled the, the 9:30 to 12 only.
Yeah, we only pulled the 9:30 to 12.
Yeah, 9:30 to 12.
Okay, but we, so we approved the rest of the day?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, the Maureen Hancock Postcards from Heaven's approved.
Everything else is approved except the 9:30 to 12 slot.
You can't serve alcohol till 12.
9:30 a.m.
On that day.
On Saturday?
Yeah.
Until 12 o'clock?
You could, you could serve from 11 o'clock.
You could serve at 11, but you took that.
Yeah, yeah, we took that one off.
Yeah. You could have served at 11 a.m.
Okay.
No, 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 the other thing too is, if it's free, if he's not charging for it, then there's no issue anyways.
Well, no, I charge for the alcohol.
Okay.
It's, it's a, it's a fundraiser, and by ABC, I can't give that away.
Okay.
I do try, so. So, I'm sorry, what, on December 2nd, what am I able to do with that?
No, this was December 17th, wasn't it?
No.
No, December 2nd.
Yeah. So, you're okay from 12 on?
12 p.m. until 12 a.m.
Correct.
Okay.
Perfect.
That's fine.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Actually, concealingly, to 1 o'clock. I don't think you applied for 1 o'clock, though, right?
No, I think I'll be done by then.
Okay.
No, it's a great, the movie premiere is very cool. We're going to roll out the red carpet. Literally, I have a red carpet. We're going to have the big spotlight out there, and it's going to be quite the event. We're looking forward to it. It's a fundraiser, but it's Lionsgate release, and the star, Jack Burnold, is in Norton, so. Four other of the child actors are coming in, and they're all going to be signing autographs, and it's going to be quite the event. Yeah, we're very excited about it.
That's great.
Good.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And I know the last time I was here, I said I was going to try to avoid doing the one-days. That's an awful, it's gotten a lot bigger since the last time I remembered that application.
I think you promised us, Bob.
I promised I would try.
Chris reminded you, by the way, you weren't here.
I'll go back and get the, the tape.
I've already looked at the tape.
Thank you very much.
All right, Bob.
Have a good one. Hey, Jim.
Now you can adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor? Aye. Good night, everybody.